Welcome to the January 19th, 2021 special meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. I would like everyone to please stand and take the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I would like to take any staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Sheriff Stoppa, Sheriff DiVassilio, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, board. How are we all doing this fine Tuesday morning? I hope everybody's well. I just wanted to bring up some concerns. I know that staff and the public are concerned about the inauguration that we have coming up tomorrow. I just want to have our public be rest assured that the sheriff's office in this county is prepared. I don't foresee any problems. I believe the citizens on both sides of our political realm in this county, they have been, and I would believe that they would be continued to be very respectful of each other. I don't see that we're going to have any problems. I can't speak for other bigger cities. I know Sacramento is preparing for quite a bit. But I truly believe that in our county, our constituents are very respectful of each other. I think that was proven during this past summer's protests that we did have in the county. They were very peaceful, very respectful. So I expect to see the same, but I want the public to be rest assured that the sheriff's office will have some extra people on patrol in the event that there is any problems. That's all I really have. Any questions from the board?
Any board members? Mr. DiVassilio, thank you for your heightened awareness. These have been trying times across the nation for lots of reasons. And thank you for your confidence in our citizens across Calaveras County. I also share your confidence that we've respected each other, no matter what side of the political spectrum we've been on. So, thank you, Mr. DiVassilio.
Great. You guys have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Are there any other further, excuse me, are there any other further announcements anybody would like to make?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Peter Mauer, the Planning Director.
Thank you, Peter.
I just wanted to remind the public that the proposed zoning map update is out for review. We're requesting that if you have concerns or comments to contact us by the end of this week so that we can incorporate those in the fixes that need to be made into the packet that will be going to the Planning Commission in February. So just, if people have questions or concerns about it, please contact our office. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other further announcements anybody would like to make?
Hi, this is Kathy Galeno. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Galeno.
I believe Robert Packenger had an announcement. I thought he was on, but I don't see him.
If, we'll give him a moment. Do you have an announcement?
This is Robert. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I just wanted to briefly report that our crews are currently patrolling the Arnold area for downed trees. There are various downed trees. We also have a firefight crew on standby, so that's occurring today. They worked through the night. They worked yesterday. So we'll keep patrolling and making sure that the roads are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Packenger. Any further announcements? With that, we'll move on to the Public Health Update. Administrative Office received an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Sam Leach and Mr. Archer from Mark Twain Medical Center. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today.
Good morning, board members and public. Thank you for allowing me to present today. We're listening to your feedback and we're hopefully ready to provide some clarity to the things that we've been hearing and some of the things that are floating around in the community. And thank you to Doug Archer from Mark Twain Medical Center for joining us and providing an update on the things that they're doing as well. I'll run through some, a few things pretty quickly here. Last week, we did activate the dashboard, so that is now up and running on the COVID website for the county. And that will have the same numbers that I'm giving you here, which is our total case number right now is 1,240 total cases. We have 76 active cases. We've had 23 fatalities and 1,141 people recovered. The county status is widespread, and we are still in the regional stay-at-home order for the San Joaquin region. To date, the number of vaccines, the total number of vaccine shots that have been put into arms is 919. 769 of those are the first round, and then the second round, about 150. And there are more being done today. Now, that includes the vaccines that Public Health has done, the vaccines that Mark Twain has done leading up to today, and the vaccines that CBS has done. Which brings me to something else that I need to clarify today, which is we've been getting a lot of questions about the structure of the tiers, understandably, and why certain residents in long-term care facilities have not already been vaccinated. And something that I have not said in my previous meeting that I did last week, but that I've gotten a little bit of clarification on. So, the long-term care facilities, which includes assisted living and skilled nursing, places such as Avalon Healthcare, Foothill Village, Watch Gold Strike, St. Andrews Manor, and Pendley Care Home. Those facilities were contracted, well, the facilities weren't contracted, I apologize. The Federal Health and Human Services did a contract with CBS and Walgreens nationwide to vaccinate facilities just like the ones that I mentioned. And so when the feds engaged in that nationwide contract, we understand that those facilities are in our community. CBS and Walgreens, and obviously it's CBS for our county since they're here, they are equipped to be able to go to those facilities where the residents may not be able to be transported to somewhere like Mark Twain to be vaccinated. So it's great that that contract is in place. Unfortunately, what we don't know is why has, our understanding is the first dose has already been administered to Avalon Healthcare, but we're awaiting clarity from the state and from CBS. And I believe that the California Department of Public Health is looking at this statewide as well to get more clarity from CBS and Walgreens about what is the schedule and when will these people be vaccinated. So that's a question that I'm receiving a lot of because understandably, community members are scared and frustrated when they start hearing about us vaccinating people prior to long-term care facility people being vaccinated. And just understand that we're trying to get clarity on that as well because those contracts were given at the federal level to CBS and Walgreens. So if we find out more, if we get a response, and we did reach out to CBS late last week, if we get a response, we'll try to make that public. But right now, we're still awaiting clarity on that. Okay, rewinding. As far as the vaccines that we're doing, I also have another point of interest for the community, something that's been coming up over the weekend with a news story that broke. And we did put this out on the website yesterday, but I want to take another opportunity to say that there was a report of a higher-than-usual number of possible allergic reactions reported to the California Department of Public Health from the Moderna lot 041-L20A. Again, that's the Moderna lot 041-L20A. This, I want to make sure that the public knows, this lot number has not been used by Calaveras Public Health or Mark Twain Medical Center as of this time. And I see Mr. Archer shaking his head in agreement. Out of an extreme abundance of caution, Calaveras Public Health and Mark Twain Medical Center have put a hold on the administration of vaccines from that Moderna lot until the investigation by the CDC, FDA, Moderna, and the state is complete. We will provide an update as we learn more. I will say that we do have some of those vaccines, so they're being held. But obviously, that means that our inventory, at least for the time being, could be lower than what we had hoped. Okay, a lot of stuff to cover, so bear with me. Doug, maybe I should let you jump in at that point? You have an update you want to give on your guys' appointment setting and the things that I've been hearing so much about, please?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Sam. Thanks to the public and to the supervisors for the opportunity to clarify a few things. In our world of constant information, there's a lot out there. So, we launched our, at Mark Twain Medical Center, we launched our clinic for vaccines yesterday. We hosted it down below the hospital near our cancer center. We provided 110 vaccines yesterday. As Sam mentioned, we also have some of that lot of Moderna vaccines that we pulled from our inventory and sequestered until we get better direction. But that definitely lowered our inventory, obviously. So, we're continuing our vaccine clinic operations this week. We're not doing anything today mainly because our cancer center has other operations happening. But we will be back tomorrow and Thursday. And then if we have enough vaccine, we'll continue on Friday. And then we will take a pause until we can confirm shipment of more vaccines. So not only has this Moderna lot impacted our local inventory, but it, to the tune of, I think, 330,000 doses, has impacted the nation's inventory of vaccine. So, we're working through that. You know, we made a deliberate move with our clinic that we were not going to schedule patients unless we had the vaccine. We're not going to do a first-come, first-served type of a format. So we will only schedule up to the amount of doses that we have. We, again, we did 110 yesterday. Tomorrow, we're planning to do 200. And then on Thursday, we're planning to do 250. 250 is probably going to be about the max that we want to do in a day. As you can imagine, that's a lot of choreography. I would like to give a special recognition to our clinic director, Marina Poland. She is the mastermind behind our process at the clinic. And if you had any feedback from community members from yesterday, all the feedback I have is really positive. Pretty seamless, and generally, people were there for maybe 20, 25 minutes in and out with their vaccine. So, just a quick recap. Really, the future success of our vaccine clinic is 100% tied to inventory and supply. I have heard that Moderna and Pfizer have ramped up operations and are, with the support of the government, producing vaccines 24 hours a day, 7 days a week now. The rumor is, and I don't have this confirmed yet, but they feel that they can kind of fill that gap, that backlog in inventory, in the next week and a half to two weeks. So, I guess for some support, for some help here, I can imagine the public being very, very concerned when the clinics aren't happening next week. And when the news stories come out about limited supply of vaccine, if we can just kind of help calm everyone down, I do believe vaccine is coming. I think we're just going to have a little pause here for the next week and a half to two weeks. So bear with us. We also just about melted our phone system on Friday when we went live with our scheduling number. Within 15 minutes, we had 984 voicemails within 15 minutes of putting that number out there. So, so far, we're not just going to go dark with the, you know, with the inventory issue of vaccine. We will continue taking those calls, and we will continue putting people on a waitlist. And as soon as we have the vaccine, we will ramp up operations and start calling people to get them scheduled again. So, the other important note would be, you know, we've got a really good team doing this stuff, both sides, the county and the hospital. I know there's a lot of anxiety around the situation. But if you've called us and you've left a message, give us some time to call you back. You know, we've had probably 3,000 calls come into the hospital, maybe 3,500 calls, and it's probably only 1,000 people. So each one's calling us three, four, or five times. So just bear with us. And we will be going live. We're working on the kind of the details and building of it. But we will be going live, hopefully, next week with an online scheduling format, which will be tremendous for all of us. So I'll keep you all posted on that. We'll send that out via, you know, all the forms of communication, Facebook and Pine Tree and Calaveras Enterprise and every other form. Of course, we're going with the county to get that message out as well. So, those are the updates I had. Happy to field any questions or feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Archer. Are there any board members that have any questions? Mr. Garmendy? Oh, Mr. Garmendy had his hand up.
I'll defer to Ms. Calloway.
There we go.
I mean, the question probably goes to Mr. Archer and to Mr. Leach. We, is it that we do not know how many vaccines we're going to get till it shows up on our doorstep? Or do you know that next week, you're going to be getting an additional 300 on top of the 4, 500 you have?
We do not have any shipments planned for next week. We have our requests then with both supply chains. Churchill's one big supplier, but we have an avenue through with our partnership with the county and then also through our large organization, Dignity Health. We have called all cars. We, you know, anybody and everybody that will listen to us, we have an order in. It's not so much that it just, you know, we know what we have when it shows up. We do get a little advance warning, but, you know, generally, that's two to three days. And I don't know, you know, say, for instance, if we put in an order for 1,000, we can't guarantee we're going to get 1,000. We may get 300, we may get 500. Especially right now until Pfizer and Moderna can really ramp up and meet the supply-demand. And, you know, losing 330,000 doses or sequestering those doses didn't help.
So, when you, I'm sorry, Mr. Archer.
I just, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I think it's sort of a fuzzy area. So, Mark Twain gets an allocation from Dignity, and you also get an allocation from the county?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, basically, we partner with the county. We're kind of, I guess, maybe define it as a subcontractor with the county. So we'll help them distribute what vaccines they have, but we also get a supply from Dignity Health.
Okay, and the protocol is when you get it, you return phone calls to scheduled appointments?
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
And Supervisor Callaway, just to clarify, you know, some of those doses that we get in are also second doses.
Yeah, okay. So I have another question, Mr. Chair, if that's fine.
Absolutely, Ms. Callaway.
Mr. Leach, I think, I guess the next question I would have regarding the priority of when do we move? Do we wait till all the 65ers are done before we go to food and ag? And the education, I know the schools are being done this week. And is that from the allocation that Public Health receives? And at what point will we move to the food and ag? Thank you.
I don't yet know when we're moving to food and ag. Yes, we gave Pan allocation for the schools to get started. I'm pretty certain, I don't have the numbers, the exact numbers on me for how many they have. I know that they are getting started this week. That doesn't mean that they can vaccinate everybody this week. I don't believe that they have the supply to get anywhere near that, but they are getting started with vaccinating teachers. I want to clarify a couple of other things related to that. That's that when we first got the initial shipments, that they were coming to the county, and we were filtering out. Now, Mark Twain is putting, is able to put in their own orders, right? And the same is happening with CBS and Walgreens. Other medical providers will be putting in their own orders. So that means there's a lot of competition for what's being shipped. I mean, it's all coming to our residents, one way or another, but it does make things a little confusing as to what we're going to get, how many we're going to get, when we're going to get them. And it's why we're trying to maintain as much structure as we can within those tiers. But you can understand how that makes it really difficult to, you know, do one segment first, then move on to the next segment. We're trying to do that as much as we can, but inside of those tiers, it does get really difficult, especially when you mix, you know, the federal contract with CBS and Walgreens with what Mark Twain is able to do with the 65 and over populations. And then for us, with our limited supply, doing what we can within the same tier with the folks that we're able to work with outside of that 65-plus population. So it's kind of a lot of trains running at the same time that we're doing our best to coordinate. And I understand that that, you know, creates some confusion for the public and frankly drives a lot of misinformation and some pretty wild accusations. So I would encourage people to listen to the board meetings if they want clarity. You know, we are doing press releases. Listen to, you know, what Doug Archer is bringing. Try not to get too much of your news, you know, from sources that aren't vetted. And I know people know that, but there is a lot of misinformation floating around. And then if you don't hear it live, there are things that get twisted and distorted as well. You know, Doug had last week made a comment leading up to what he just said today, which is we're going to try to do 100 the first day. We're going to try to ramp up to about 250 at our peak, right? And then somehow that got twisted and flown around on social media that I had said that about Public Health, which I didn't say. We don't have the vaccine inventory at Public Health to be able to perform at that rate as of right now. Hopefully, that'll change down the line, but that could be a month, that could be two months. I don't know. It depends on state distribution, okay?
I guess, Mr. Leach, we're sort of looking for an incident commander, and there is none. But my question before we let Supervisor Garmending in is what is it that Public Health is doing now? I understand what Mark Twain's doing. I understand what CBS is doing. What is it that Public Health is doing so we can have a clearer idea then? And is some of this information going on the dashboard? And I think I'll try and make that my last question.
Well, some of this is my typical failure in presentation skills. So I turned it over to Doug because I wanted to get an update from him, and then I hadn't really finished going through. So once again, Sheriff Stoppa and I kind of stopped the show in the middle of it. And I do have more information to cover. But I'll respond to that really quick. This week, Public Health is working on vaccinating a lot of the folks who've got their first dose. So that's our EMTs, firefighters, Public Health direct staff. Those kind of folks that are doing vaccinations and the first responders, they're getting it. Their second dose this week. We're still working to complete the first round of Tier 1A. We're also supporting CCOE in getting their folks started in the vaccination process this week. So that's mainly what we're focused on this week.
Thank you.
And it really is week by week from there, Supervisor Callaway, depending on what our supply ends up looking like and what our allotment from the state comes in. I see three supervisor hands raised. So would you guys like me to go through and finish the other things I have? Or do you want to keep talking vaccines and then I can finish with the other stuff?
Mr. Leach, let's go ahead and let you finish the rest of your presentation. My apologies, but Mr. Archer was ready for some questions. And then we'll get back to, and we'll address all the questions of all the supervisors post you finishing that up.
Sure. And most of what I want to finish with, I did want to mention that testing, we are still testing, and it's still important. We've done, just for the public health testing sites, for the county public health, we've tested 460 people since December 23rd. So that's just the public health staff testing. That's not including the OptumServe site. This week, let's see, we are offering testing at a variety of locations. This week, we have three days of testing available. We have two in Ironstone. This is the only week we're doing it twice at Ironstone. I can't remember how we ended up with a bonus day, but today and Thursday, we're testing at Ironstone in Murphy's. And then tomorrow, there is testing in West Point at the Community Hall. That testing is free. Please, you don't need an appointment, but registration, pre-registration is strongly encouraged. We have had some pretty good turnouts at our testing locations. We're still in a surge. You guys know that. It does look like daily new cases hopefully are starting to plateau and tick down a little bit. Hopefully Doug's seeing the same things over there. But we're definitely still in the surge. We are still doing investigations and contact tracing. I just want to remind the community that prevention is still the best defense. It means wash your hands, wear face covering, and practice physical distancing, right? If you're sick, please stay home. Please isolate from others. I mean, the best thing that you can do at home is, you know, do your best to take the preventive measures to not get COVID right now as far as getting us past this surge. So those things, I want to make sure that we keep stressing how important those are. And with that, I think I have covered most everything I need to cover. And I will stop and turn it over to more questions. Doug, did you want to piggyback on any of that that I cover?
Yeah, just on the actual code. Yeah, just on the actual COVID infection and I guess patient volume. So for the hospital, we've seen, knocking on wood, we've seen a decline. We peaked just after the new year with 12 positive COVID inpatients. As a kind of a benchmark, our average daily census is eight and a half. And we had 12 positive COVIDs with the full census of 16. That continued for about four days and then we started to ramp back down. Today, I'm happy to report, we have four COVID-positive patients. So we've seen a pretty significant decline. Two of those are in the ICU. Two of them are on our general med search floor. So for, you know, for our kind of state metric of ICU capacity, we have three total patients in our eight-bed ICU. So we're a little better than 50% capacity. So we're doing pretty well. We have a whole total census today in the hospital of 12. And again, four of those are COVID-positive. So, yeah, encouraging, especially for our staff. They were busy in the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Thank you, Mr. Leach. Supervisor Garamendi, you've had your hand up for a while.
Thank you very much, Mr. M... Appreciate it. First off, I'm really quite pleased about this partnership. It's been a long, we've been partnering for a long time. I think we've just gotten to a new level. Working literally hand and glove. So thank you very much, Doug, and thank you, Sam, for putting that together. I think that's very wise. And Dignity and Mark Twain, they've got a lot of resources, so working together, we're going to get things done. My one question, and I think also for mentioning earlier the issues with some of our Foothill Village and other places, Sam. That is a real concern. And if CBS and the federal government and state government can't figure it out, these are our people. And we have to figure out a way to protect them. And we might just have to figure out how to do that. I'm going to ask my primary question, so my question is going to be for, when we, now, we've, 1A is being done by the county. They're taking care of all of that. 1 Phase 1B and now the expanded 1B under the governor's direction, that's all going to be Dignity? That's all going to be Mark Twain? So we're going to, is there a single point of contact? Are we working bifurcated? Or who do we tell people to call?
You know, that's a good question. Sam, we'll probably have to team up on this one. So I don't believe the design was for Mark Twain to handle or to take care of all of 1B. You know, there are multi-layers in 1B. And I think it, you know, what we stepped up for Mark Twain, what we wanted to step up and do is is provide the vaccine for those that can kind of come into the clinic a little more ambulatory. And that frees up Public Health to be able to go to sites or to, you know, for instance, us going into Avalon to provide vaccines probably doesn't make as much sense or going to the, you know, to the jail or to the correctional facilities, things like that. So I think, I would say we're partnering on the 1B so that we can move through it a little quicker. That's a huge portion of our population. So, Sam, I don't know if you have any comments to add there?
Yeah, well, look, you know, when you moved 65 and over, I mean, Mark Twain had agreed to take on 75 and over. And then in the blink of an eye, you know, the state makes the decision. And some of that, you know, not to blame the state for everything, some of the state's good intent on that. You know, their noble intent behind that was, they knew that they had to open things up because there were some places that wanted to vaccinate more and were moving somewhat quickly and still had vaccines on hand. That was the exception. But there were some places that were being held up because the tiers were too restrictive. But then they kind of opened it up so much and we're lucky to have the partnership that we have with Mark Twain, who is willing to, you know, keep their hand raised and step up for the 65 and over, which is a much, much heavier, as you know, from the numbers that I stated.
Oh, yeah.
So for us to clarify, or sorry Supervisor Garamendi, to respond to your question, we plan to keep working through the other segments of 1B. I mean, we're still finishing up 1A and the second doses there. As we have more coming into Public Health that we have to use, we'll be working kind of simultaneously to Mark Twain, working with the 65 and over. We'll be looking at other segments of Tier 1B. But Tier 1B, in the way that it's structured right now, while I can't give you an exact timetable, nobody can, it's going to take us a while to work through 1B.
Absolutely. I was just looking for a point of contact, a number, and Doug mentioned 3,000 phone calls. I can't imagine how you guys are going to sort through that. But, you know, having that one filter is going to make it a lot smoother down the road because it's just going to get crazier. Before I get some more say.
Yeah, for sure. And we are not, we are not in a position at Calaveras County Public Health to be able to start taking appointments for other groups in 1B. Right now, we're still reaching out to groups. We have very limited supply. And we'll get rolling as we go. But right now, until the supply is significantly increased, that's where we are, okay?
Yeah, I would imagine, you know, the 65 and over, you know, non-ag worker, non, you know, just the general 65 and over group of 1B is going to take us months, literally months, to get through. And I would imagine if the county finishes, you know, the kind of the more esoteric 1B categories, we'll probably merge together on the 65 and overs at a certain point in the future. It is a little confusing, but I would, I mean, and I don't know that we need to give this direction. From the amount of phone calls we've had, people aren't bashful. They're calling. But I would encourage, if you're not associated with, you know, an entity, a public entity, a large employer in the food-ag world or something like that, if you're a 70-year-old resident of Calaveras County, call our phone number and try to get scheduled. I think that's the best direction we can give. If you're in that 65 and over tier and not otherwise affiliated with some type of a, you know, essential worker operation, I would point them our direction.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Sam, for putting a team up on West Point testing tomorrow. It's a long drive for those guys to get over to Snore. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi. Ms. Vollnorf.
I have a question about the second doses. Can you, I don't know if it's Sam or Doug, could you clarify a little bit more on the inventory and the second doses that are going to be coming out?
Sure. Sam, I'll dive in. You can follow up if you have any other comments. So that's really where the supply chain issue comes into play. We just gave the first doses yesterday for this Tier 1B crowd. So that gives us, you know, four weeks essentially from yesterday before that second dose is due. So we are counting on additional shipments to be able to provide that second dose. So, you know, there is some, I guess, there's a little bit of a fragile element to the supply chain at this point. But I do believe, as mentioned earlier, one and a half to two weeks from now, we should be in a much different position with supply chain. So I'm personally, I'm an optimistic kind of guy. I'm not concerned about those second doses coming up in four weeks. And so I'm confident we'll get the supply necessary to be able to buy those second doses.
Yeah, nothing to add. It's consistent with what Doug just said. I will, you know, just to assure the public, you know, the majority of people in the medical community, the majority of people in the know knew that this was going to take several months to ramp up. And I know that, you know, the worst thing you can do is overpromise and under-deliver, right? And there were some overpromises made in the media. I'm not blaming anyone in particular, but, you know, a lot of rumors get floated around, whether it's on social media or by people just trying to make things sound more expeditious than they are. And frankly, we were pretty sure that this was going to take a couple of months to get the heavier lift done and to wait for inventory to catch up. And then hopefully by toward the end of March into April, things will start really humming along. The general public, again, just to remind you, by the time we get down to the general public, it's going to be this summer. And it could be into late summer before we get to that point. And even, I don't know that, like, so many people don't really know that. We're just giving you a rough timeframe. Could that mean August? Could that mean September? Nobody really knows for sure. I'm trying to be optimistic, like, you know, like Doug is. Doug's probably more optimistic than I am. He also knows more than I do. So, you know, maybe by June. We don't, but we don't know. And we just ask for people to be as patient as you can. Understand that we're, you know, we're really working hard to bring you this information. And one of the changes that's really probably been obvious to some people is that we're trying to give you as much information as we get it, as accurately as we can. And sometimes when we're that transparent and then something changes the next day, it looks like we gave you misinformation. And that's not our intention. Our intention is to respond to what we are asked by the public through the esteemed members of the board, which is tell us something. Tell us something. Tell us what you know. I mean, I heard it over and over in my first few weeks here. And so, you know, in our defense, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to give you as much information as accurately as we can, as expeditiously as we can. And we'll continue with that strategy, even at the risk of having things change an hour after I say them.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Ms. Vollnorf, do you have anything else? Not this time? Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli, thank you for waiting patiently.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Archer and Mr. Leach, for all the information. You've partnered together and done as well. A lot of my questions were asked by the other supervisors, great questions, but I do have a couple of questions I need to ask. And one of them has to do with CBS. I understand they're under contract with the federal government. But do we, as a county, do you, Sam, or Dr. Archer, do either one of you have any contact with CBS on what their plans are or any communication at all with them? And if you don't, can we reach out to them so we know? Because these are our constituents in these long-term parish facilities. And I'm sure they're wondering what's going on, what's happening. If we can at least partnership somewhat with CBS, it's just for communication on where they're going. And then the other question had to do with, because they've only done one, is it a possibility that this vaccine that creates a great inaction to it that we pulled off the shelf? Could that be part of the reason why they've delayed the other facilities?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you Supervisor Toffenelli. I think you win the kindergarten award for having waited patiently the longest with your hand up today. As far as CBS, yes, we have reached out to them. We don't have, you know, it's not like it's Mark Twain where we have a close working partnership. We need to get ahold of people, you know, regionally, and then I'm sure that gets set up. It's a huge national chain, right? So we did reach out to someone in their region on Friday when I started getting a few inquiries about what's going on, you know, the skilled nursing and the long-term care facilities. So we have reached out to them. We haven't heard back yet. But I also, please understand that the California Department of Public Health is also looking into this with CBS. So my assumption is this is a much bigger, you know, statewide, potentially nationwide issue that's probably happening well above, you know, my level as interim director of, you know, Health and Human Services here in Calaveras County. Not to minimize what I do, but obviously that's a huge contract. So hopefully we will get clarification. My deputy director is actually on a call with CDPH right now because I was scheduled to be here, so I'm not on that call. She's covering that for me, so maybe we'll hear something. If we do get information, we'll pass it along. As far as whether anything with any of the pharmaceutical companies impacted that slowdown or whatever it is, I won't speculate to that. I don't have any information on that. It's a good question.
Okay.
More than 300,000 doses that have been held, from what Doug says, you know, obviously it begs that question. But I don't know that, so I won't speculate. I don't know what CBS is up to.
Well, thank you. And I just, if you do, I don't expect you to speculate at all. That wouldn't be advisable. I have one last question, and it has to do with people that have had the virus and recovered or are in a facility, like we have four in the hospital right now. Are they able to get, or should you sign up to get a vaccination if you have previously had this virus and then you've recovered from it? Do we know if you can get it again, or should you get vaccinated?
So, and just to be clear, this is my disclaimer. I'm not a clinician. So I only play one on TV. So the guidance we've received from Dignity Health is that if you should still get the vaccine even if you've recovered from COVID-19. There is evidence of reinfections, not widespread. It's not extremely common. But I don't think they know. I mean, this disease is only a year old for us. So the general direction right now is that even if you are recovered from COVID-19, you should still seek the vaccine.
And there is CDC guidance, and there is CDC guidance on that. I don't have it right in front of me, so I'd encourage people to go to the CDC Frequently Asked Questions page. Speak to your medical providers, you know, get the advice that you need to get.
And I have one last question, and then I'm done. You mentioned CBS and the federal contract they have for long-term care facilities. However, there was some of the conversation about getting vaccinated at CBS. Can anybody get vaccinated at CBS if you go there, much like a flu shot? Or their only contract and the only doses they have is for long term?
Well, I probably shouldn't speak for CBS, but I am pretty certain that you cannot just, you know, any general person out there cannot just make an appointment right now at CBS, okay? They're not at that point. I'm sure they're focused on the contracts that they have. Right now, as frustrated as people are, if they're in the 65 and over category, they should be calling Mark Twain and leaving a message. Mark Twain will get back to them as they can, understand that the volume is massive. If they're not in that grouping, they're waiting to hear from us and they're listening to communications that we give on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. I'm trying to be here every single time the board meets so that I can, you know, steal the thunder from planning who thought they had the spotlight today. You know, these kind of things. So we'll try to provide as much clarity as often as we can. We've been doing press releases and media releases when we can. I've talked to Dakota at the Enterprise. We're trying to get as much information as we can out into our community and we will continue with that strategy, okay? But right now, I understand that there are a lot of people who absolutely want the vaccine yesterday. And we've just got to be a little bit more patient and we'll get it to you as we can. And we're working through this strategically and equitably.
Thank you, Mr. Leach, for clarifying. If you don't mind, I'll have a follow-up here. You know, it's good news to hear that, you know, within possibly 15 minutes of you putting out the service announcement, close to 980 voicemails. It's always a grave concern whether we're being heard when we put out these public announcements, especially with something as crucial as this. especially with something as crucial as this. You know, Mr. Leach, you just followed up with the fact that you're going through so many different avenues trying to get the word out, and we appreciate that, and let's continue doing that moving forward. It's crucial that when we do want to get the word out, that we do it clearly and loudly and ring the tower bells loudly as we can so that everyone can hear it. You know, consistently I hear this, and I mean, it's an issue across the nation, much less the world, is the supply and demand when it comes to the vaccines. And I, and, you know, as we move forward, we can only do as much as we have. You know, at that, you know, still, you know, every time you put an order, shoot for the stars, hopefully we'll land on the moon, gentlemen. You know, it's, I know you can only do so much, but you know, let's do everything we can. And I'm sure you already have, and I appreciate you following through with it. That said, you know, with the vaccines coming slowly, this is, you know, this is what birds, this is man's way of building herd immunity through the vaccine, you know, and us being to the point where we can see the light, the end of the tunnel possibly with COVID. So, at this time, you know, and you brought it up already, Mr. Leach, when it came to the testing. It's still crucial that we're following through with that, you know, as much as possible. I just had my first two tests this weekend, both negative thankfully. Nothing pleasurable, but at the same time, you know, something you said last week, Mr. Leach, you know, something that I wasn't ever looking forward to. I didn't want to become a statistic. At the same time, you know, after I got that negative result, there's a sense of relief. And that's something that you said when you got your shot from the vaccine. And, you know, so I, you know, I can say that, you know, that that's good, that's something good that you said last week that resounds with me, and I think that the rest of the public, you know, should keep that in mind. You know, Mr. Toffenelli brought up a very good point that I have down in here in my notes, coordination with CBS between, you know, when it comes out and, you know, keep beating that drum. Let's try to get out to them. Let's see if they're corporate, is willing to start working with the different counties. I mean, just let us know what's going on, you know? So that, so that way, you know, if we know there's a gap there that we could possibly fill, let's make that happen. So, I appreciate that also. I don't, you know, I really want to thank the rest of the board. They really addressed all my questions. I just want to follow up with a few things and thank you, Mr. Archer, and all your staff and everyone working with you, also Mr. Leach. I mean, it's, it takes everyone. It takes, you know, so to say, a village. So, we appreciate you all coordinating and working together and coming to the point where it's like, you know, it's, we're truly partners, and we aren't working against each other. And that's the type of coordination we need for the public here. I'm going to go ahead and leave it there if no one else has any other questions to public comment.
Yes, Chairstopper, we have one public comment.
Thank you.
Ms. McBride? Ms. McBride, are you there?
I am, thank you. As I'm listening to you folks discuss all of this, and I understand some people want the vaccine, I'm concerned because at no time at all, not one time, do I hear you mention about building your immune system. The actions that a person can take during in-between time, like breathing fresh air deeply into their lungs, exercising, eating healthy, increasing their vitamin D, which being out in the sun helps, increasing their vitamin C, not one worked. And that's really, really disappointing. I respect the person's desire to have that vaccine, but don't you think in the meantime, that would be great information to put out to the average person and stop with all the fear and let them feel like they got a little bit of control in this situation by improving their immune system when they can? I understand not everybody can. And I really have to wonder what happened to the flu? Did it actually disappear? We don't have it anymore, huh? And I'm assuming, are the other, where you guys are going to be doing your messages and such, because I know you like to all be done it, at that period of time? So, I guess I'll comment on that when that comes up, so I'm not breaking your rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Are there any other public comments?
There are no other public comments at this time.
Thank you. Let me catch my iPad back up and get it back floating again because I'm missing my agenda Thank you. So, with that, unless there's any other comments that Mr. Leach or Mr. Archer would like to address or any of the other board members, I'll move on to the next item. I'll take the silence as a yes, move on to the next item. Thank you. Excuse me. Item two, by the Ministry of Office, Kraft Board Message Regarding Public Health During the Pandemic. I'm going to go ahead and open this. This is something I brought up to the board last week. I had some conversations with Supervisor Callaway prior. I think everyone agrees on it. Had at least one board member reach out to me afterwards, just making sure that, you know, we were able to talk about this so that we put out a consensus message, and I do appreciate that. I want everyone to be on the same exact page so that when we put this out. I will concede my apologies. This was one that I planned on working on this weekend, but I personally had lost my time this weekend. So, I do have some notes here that we had taken, but I wasn't able to put together a example of the board message like I had wanted to for this meeting. And this is my own fault, you know, that I was indisposed at the time. But with that, I'm going to bring up these notes, and then I'm going to leave it to board discussion, and then maybe we can all agree on something that can be put together and facilitated for public dissemination. So, I got to get to my notes here. Okay. We have the picture that we'd all taken on the board, on the stairs going into the county with our masks on. You know, I like the idea of the mask, and we could start out with that, one of those pictures, but I think we can have a better picture taken. I think the quality on those could be better, but that's a minor issue as opposed to the message we like to put forward. And also possibly, you know, giving the option of if a supervisor wants to send out the message on their own, you know, they could, you know, have their own photo caption also. Basically, bullet points coming down to the message are short, you know, and to the point. Let's wear a mask, wash our hands, let's keep our distance, and let's shop locally to keep our business doors open. And these are all the, you know, this is how we move forward healthily so that we can remain vibrant as a community. So, it's up to us, this is a good suggestion by Ms. Callaway, it's up to us, it's up to you, you know? It's up to us as a community. We're all in this together. It's up to us as individuals to understand that, you know, to understand that. So, with that, I'm going to open it up to discussion for the rest of the board to discuss on it, and then see if we're all on the same page as we move forward.
Thank you, Ben. I think it's a great idea. I think we ought to do it. Doesn't seem to be any dispute that those four items, wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, and try to support your local businesses. I'd have a hard time arguing against any of those ideas. Is there anything else that we need to be adding in there? I mean, I guess I got to, I'm on board with what we've got. Is there anything from public health that we need to think about as far as our messaging? I don't know whether Sam or Colleen have ideas, but Ben, I'm on board for those four.
Absolutely. I would love to hear from Mr. Leach and see if he has any more information that would help facilitate getting this message out clearly.
I don't have anything new to add. I've heard a little bit, and I support what you guys are doing, but I think it's fine. I think the direction you guys are headed in is good. It doesn't hurt to ask. Do what you got to do. But I don't have anything new to add.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Will that be on Mr. Garmendy? Okay. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, thank you, Chairstopper. Could it be possible that we could add something like, and when the time comes, get vaccinated?
I'm all for that. I think that's a great bullet point to add to the message. Just something short to that effect. I mean, we don't want to build up something too big. We want to keep it positive and to the point, absolutely. I'm for that.
Everything else sounds fine.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Ms. Callaway? I know you don't have your hand raised, but I want to get your input and Ms. Fuldorff also.
That's fine. What Gary said, when your time comes, get vaccinated. I'd like to see this on the dashboard. I'd like to see this on the pine tree. I'd like to see it on whatever our personal email or Facebook or whatever it is to our constituent. It's public information, and the more places we can put it, the better. At least we're speaking up as a board.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. I appreciate that. Ms. Fuldorff, any input?
I like everything that everyone's already contributed. I don't have any other bullet point to add.
Okay. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. I would like to ask staff if there's any comments to it prior to me going to public Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and take public comment this time.
Yes, Chairstopper, we have Terry McBride.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. McBride.
Hello there, Terry McBride, California State, New California State Senator and Committee Chair. When you guys do this, you know, fear has been propagated this past year like, I cannot believe. And when you look at the numbers of recovery on this so-called pandemic, it's pretty high. And when you're telling me the numbers from that, unless that thousand happened in the last week, this is no pandemic. So, you know, that's since last March, and we need to start being honest about this. Again, when you push fear, does that increase the stress in people and cause them to get sick? Why, yes, it does. So, that's your choice, guys, but why don't you look at the press releases from the Public Health Department for the two years that we had virulent flu? I mean, everybody go out, get your vaccine, and of course then, all you had to do is wash your hands and stay home if you're sick. You weren't supposed to close your business, wear a mask, taking away your own self-identity, stopping people from touching and hugging each other, which is one of the most important things human beings need to be able to do. You might want to go look at those before you put this out, because those weren't fear mongering. Those were common sense that our parents all taught us and our grandparents taught us, wash your hands, stay home if you're sick. If you choose to get the vaccine, we're working on getting it for you. If you choose not to, well, that's a personal choice. In the end, that's a personal choice. And so, again, remember you took an oath to the Constitution. And I really hope that by this point in time, y'all have read, and that includes every single person that took their oath of office, and that you will take that in consideration as you move forward here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Will there be further public comment?
No other further comments.
So, with that, Ms. Roll?
Yes, sir.
So, what I have here for notes are, you know, we would like to put these messages out, so I want to do a roll of bullet points before we vote on this as a board. Wear our masks, wash your hands, keep our distance. When available, get your vaccine. Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Toffenelli, or do we have better words for that that we would suggest?
When the vaccine becomes available, get vaccinated.
Okay. When available, get your vaccine, vaccination, and shop locally to keep our businesses' doors Mr. Leach, I see your hands up. Or is that?
Yeah, I apologize for jumping in here. Just on the vaccines, you know, some people do have individual medical concerns or needs, and so you might want to think about language, having some kind of disclaimer in there as far as when it becomes available. So, I see Sarah is chiming in, and I'll let her bail me out on this, but I just kind of wanted to point that out.
No, very, very, very good point, you know? Everyone has, I mean, there's issues with some people that can't wear a mask for certain respiratory reasons and everything else, so very good point.
I agree. Thank you, Sam. And I think we could probably easily make that point, that bullet point, say something like, you know, in consultation with your doctor or after consulting your doctor, you know, get the vaccine if it's safe for you to do so, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. I think if the board, you know, it's a little gray areas, exactly what we say, but as long as that's the point and we got the proper disclaimer in place, probably for the entire message when it comes to that, to that point. I would be interested if the board would, someone would like to move this item, make a motion?
So, move. I'll say it.
Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Garmendy, a second by Supervisor Toffenelli. Roll call vote. Supervisor District One, Gary Toffenelli?
Aye.
Supervisor District Two, Jack Garmendy?
District Two, aye.
Supervisor District Three, Marita Callaway?
Yes.
Supervisor District Four, Amanda Fuldorff?
Aye.
And Supervisor District Five, Ben Stopper?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your support. I wish I could have come forward with a better example prior to this meeting, and thank you for all working with me on this item. So, we'll move on to the next item. I want to thank Supervisor Callaway for bringing this forward expeditiously. I mean, it's something that we have to move forward on it. Sorry, I got to get back. Um, sorry, I got, got back to the right page here again. Um, so this is put forward by Supervisor District Three. Send letter to California Department of Public Health requesting that Calaveras County be shifted from the San Joaquin Valley region to the Greater Sacramento region for purposes of the state's regional stay-at-home order. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and step aside and let Ms. Cowley take, take the reins on this as she's put this letter forward. And uh, thank you very much, Ms. Cowley.
Um, we're in a situation that we haven't faced before and sort of it means adapting to the moment. The same kinds of things that Mr. Leach and Mr. Archer talked about. And I feel like now is the time for us to take action. We as a board have continually tried to walk the line between the economy of our businesses and the health of our community. And now is the time for us to, and I know I have maybe, you have too, is send a letter to the Director for the uh, California Department of Public Health asking us to be reassigned to the Greater Sacramento area. I have asked Dignity Health to sign on, which they have. Uh, I've asked the Sheriff to sign on since he's, has lobbied for this through his sources. And I've asked the City of Angels to sign on. And that, um, I'd like the Board of Supervisors to sign on to this letter. Um. Ms. Edwards, is it possible that we can share the letter with the board?
Uh, yes, did you wanna? Of, of course, I don't know if you wanted to read the draft, I know it's not lengthy or um.
I don't believe in lengthy.
I know, that's why it's not. Um, so if you, if you wanted to read that and then if any of your colleagues have feedback or, oh, alternatively, uh, the clerk is sharing the draft.
Um, so maybe let the board uh, see that. Uh, Ms. Simpson, could you raise it a little so we could see uh, Dr. Ottwall's name on it also, please? Up, there we go, thank you, just so they can see who else. So give the board a moment to read the letter.
Marita?
Yes.
Um, I have no problem with this letter as it's written. I do, the one thing I might edit is the uh, the, the, the the local economy linked to Sacramento region. I mean, I understand why we're trying to do this and I'm not opposed to that. But we have to, but I, I think that it's gonna be important that it's straightforward. And our economy is linked to San Joaquin County far greater than it is to Sacramento County. So I would just drop that one sentence, um, just because it doesn't.
So we just said, no, that's fine, I was, uh, no, fine. Um, we believe it's in the best interest of our residents to be linked to the Greater Sacramento period, region. And just drop in our local economy?
Yeah, because that's gonna, that's just.
Got it, oh, okay, got it, and I'm fine with that.
Uh, I see your hand up, Mr. Toffenelli.
I think Amanda had her stuff first, but my, my only comment is, why did it say maybe the mayor?
Because I didn't know when I drafted it if Alvin, Mr. Brolio was gonna sign it or Melissa. So we have to get that clarified with the city.
Okay, I just had a question because it says Melissa Eads, maybe the mayor.
That's right.
That was kinda clear that.
When we asked the city, they didn't know if Melissa would sign it or um, the administrator or the mayor, that's all. So that has to be clarified.
Good catch, Mr. Toffenelli, thank you.
And if I may, I actually have one other um, edit. I think the uh, the first bullet point, if I'm not mistaken, um, we just need to insert a Calaveras has consistently maintained a lower COVID-19 case rate.
Has consistently maintained low, okay, okay, got it.
Very, very, very good. Uh, and, and also uh, the, I, I, I apologize, I'll, 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 I'll let everyone else finish before I bring it up. Um, is that all, Mr. Toffenelli, I apologize?
Yeah, and um, Amanda has her hand up, so.
Yeah, yes, sir, uh, Ms. Fuldor.
Would it be good to mention that we are gateway into Alpine County, which is open um, due to the Sacramento region opening up?
The only reason I didn't include Alpine is, one of the reasons is most of Alpine County is on the other side of the mountain in the Markleyville area, and it's only the Bear Valley side. Um, and Alpine has like very few cases. Um, so that's why I didn't include Alpine, but uh, and I'd have to go look up. I'd have to go look up what their issues are, but since we're squeak, we're really, I'm really trying to tie us to Amador mostly. Um, and separate ourselves from Toowalomee. That was my thought, because Toowalomee is really high and Amador's higher than we are. And um, Alpine, it's, almost everything is on the other side and it's on their tribal lands. So that's why I hadn't included, but you know, if you all wanna include it, I'd have to, I'd have to go look that up.
No, it's fine, I just wasn't sure if it was worthy to mention since um, they would be traveling through Calaveras up the corridor to Alpine, which is open.
Uh, to Bear Valley, yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, I sup, I like this and I support this.
I guess I'd, I'd rather leave Alpine out because of where their cases are and that it's mostly on the other side of the mountain, which is close to El Dorado and Placer. But um, that was my thought.
Absolutely. Um, Mr. Garmendy, do you have your hand up? Is there another thing you would like to bring up?
Just one question, I, I understand why we're doing this and what the benefits to us are. Are there downsides to doing this from the public health side that might impact allocations of resources or other things by shifting to Sacramento County? I don't wanna do this if it's gonna, I don't wanna do the right thing and hurt ourselves. So I guess that's a question for Sam or Colleen or whoever can answer that question.
Yeah, Colleen, Colleen is not on and uh, I don't, I don't have any insight for you. I don't have any, any warnings for you Supervisor Garmendy. Um, I, I understand the rationale for doing it and uh, support it.
So we don't, we don't, is it that there are no downsides or we just don't know of any downsides? Have we asked this question?
I ran it by, oh, I'm sorry. Um, Jack, I, Supervisor Garmendy, sorry, I ran it by CSAC. Um, also.
Well, for, for, CSAC represents the whole state. I'm, I'm curious, if Calaveras leaves the San Joaquin Valley, will we be sacrificing anything as far as resources or opportunities, or is all this just upside?
I can't answer that question.
I, I wouldn't describe it as all upside because we don't, we don't know.
So we don't know what the outcome is gonna be?
No, right now.
Don't know what happens to us.
Obviously, there's a right now, uh, we don't know what that would mean down the road.
Well, I, I, hey, look, I'm for this letter, I wanna open up too, but I just wanna know what the downside is. And I'm having a hard time doing something without knowing.
That's a good, that's a good point, Mr. Garmendy, but I can't answer that question. Um, there is, I mean, the big downside is San Joaquin Valley comes out and the Greater Sacramento region goes back in.
Right, right.
I mean, that could happen, you're right.
Um, ju- just, just, I mean, to, to get on with the conversation also with you, Mr. Garmendy. I mean, your concerns may be for uh, how, or, you know, how is vaccines distributed possibly to higher, higher case rate areas or, or testing, you know, facilitated to those areas and everything. And I think that the state isn't uh, going down that route so much from what I've seen so far as they are just trying to get everybody as much as they can, as fast as they can. You know, as soon as humanly possible, so yeah, you know, when it comes to regional, I think the regional is more so uh, developed forward as I've seen it. Now, I could be wrong, more, more towards how, how everyone's structured moving forward with, you know, what's open, what's closed, how, what travels allowed and everything else. Um, but that, that's just my perception of what I've seen so far. I understand your concern.
No, and, and I just wanted to echo, I think, what, both what Mr. Leach said and what Supervisor Stopper just said. As of right now, we have not seen the state, um, you know, sort of apportioning vaccines or anything based upon the regions. But I think your guess is as good as mine as to whether that theoretically could change in the future and, and we don't now. Um, but not as of right now.
I, I would concur with Ms. Edwards. I mean, we don't know because this, we don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow as we've seen throughout the pandemic. The state's changed course a few times, not saying that, you know, as we're all learning throughout the process. So there's, there could be a negative impact, Mr. Garmendy.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I, I, when I started this conversation, I'm absolutely fine with it. I'm a little distressed that we don't know the answer to the downside. So in which case, Mr. Chair, I'll probably abstain from this vote. I just don't know what's gonna happen. I'd just like a little bit more information.
Right, well, I think throughout the pandemic, none of us know what's gonna happen, but I understand your point and it's a good one. Um, is there any other, Mr. Leach, you have your hands up?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just take the opportunity to apologize for that. You know, it's, it's one of these things where having an interim director is, is probably a disadvantage in this moment because if I'd been here for a few years and understood more of the history and the dynamics like I would from a probation context, I'd be able to fill you in. But it, it wouldn't be a quick, easy answer to obtain and, and I don't have it for you.
Mi- Mi- Mr. Toffenelli.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, so Sam, how, how is vaccines currently being distributed? Obviously, we got in the hundreds, i- is it by population? Is it by population for each zone, like San Joaquin Zone has X amount of people in it? So they get X amount of vaccines and then it's distributed per county within that region? Or, or LA is huge? I, how is it distributed? Is it population-wise versus case-wise? Uh, there's gotta be some way to just, they are determining how much we, Calaveras, get regardless of what zone we're in. If it hasn't to do with the number of cases that we have or any county has.
Yeah, and the, and the vaccines is a separate, separate issue from this. This is really more in regards to the regional stay-at-home order, right, for the immediate discussion. But as far as the vaccines, that is supposed to be county population-driven.
Yeah. County population, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and bring up some points. I fully support this letter when it comes to the regional stay-at-home order. I understand Mr. Garmendy's concerns and they're valid. But uh, just some numbers I ran, um, based on population, on total, total uh, on total cases within each county. Um, Sacramento has had 5% of their county uh, infected. San Joaquin Counties had 7% of their county infected. Amara Counties had 7% of their county infected. Twomee Counties had 6% of their county population infected. And Calaveras Counties over, just over 3% total population of their county affected. I ran these numbers based on what the state posted because some counties don't necessarily, um, like, for example, Amara County does not include their statistics when it comes to Mule Creek, State Penitentiary, when they post it on their local site. So the state site typically will reflect a higher number for uh, each individual county. I think we'll take the state's numbers when it comes to all these. But this, this just tells me that, um, you know, you look at the, if I, if I were to run the numbers on the rest of the San Joaquin area, the, the numbers in Calaveras County don't necessarily reflect the rest. I mean, Mariposa County would be a exception to that. But uh, we're more aligned when it comes to the statistics of the Sacramento region. Um, as of now, things can change. But I think it would be our benefit when it comes to the regional stay-at-home order to be in the Sacramento area. I fully support what uh, Ms. Cowley's putting forward. If there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and put this forward to public comment. Is there anything else? I'll go ahead and go to public comment.
Yes, Chair Stopper, we have one, Terry McBride.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, all right, Terry McBride, y'all know who I am. Um, you know, when you guys are doing this, and God bless you for thinking of it, basically, you're asking uh, a uh, tra- uh, dictator to stop beating you with a stick with San Joaquin written on it and start hitting you with a stick that says Greater Sacramento region on it. When do you think the numbers might change? How do you know that it's not going to be Sacramento next week? Now, Vicky Renkey gave to you folks the Healthy Communities Resolution, put together by Kevin Kylie and James Gallagher. And they approached 15 counties in Northern California and I wrote to them and asked, well, did you include Calaveras? And they, and they said, well, no, no, we didn't. Well, after listening to you guys for the last, what, six months, I understand why they didn't. But if you would take the time and read that thing, you're standing up for your citizens. And you're still realizing that there's some sort of a virus out there, whether people believe it's a pandemic or not, or a plandemic. It's, you know, whatever, but you're standing up for your citizens while practicing safety. And then I'm also, as I read this, because it discusses the fact that drug abuse, delayed medical care, depression, especially amongst youngsters that aren't around their friends, and the overall need for mental health services. I don't think I've ever heard a report about that. Has that ever been done, talking about what the effect of these lockdowns and not having a job, having their unemployment checks um, held back because our state is in such financial crisis to the point of really close blowing into a bankruptcy, too bad it's not allowed anymore? Um, I, I've never heard that. I find that interesting because everybody's just focusing on the C-word. Nobody talks about the effect of what all these drastic, unconstitutional, unlawful edicts are doing to the average citizen. So I would ask that you please, and I, you know, you haven't listened to me yet, but I would ask that you look at the Healthy Communities Resolution, Vicky Renkey sent that to you. You all have it, I have it, if you don't, or you can go look it up, easy enough. Other counties are doing it, other counties are standing up for their citizens. And I'm wondering at what point in time will you? And I remind you again, you took an oath to the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Is there any further public comment?
There is no other for, um, public comment.
Would, with that, um, is there, is there any other edits that, let, let's look at the uh, letter real quick and uh, Mi- Ms. Edwards had something else to bring up, I believe? I'm not sure if she would like to, or she's okay with everything that we've already addressed?
No, I think it had addressed, or I think we already addressed the one point. No, I think it had addressed, or I think we already addressed the one point I had about adding, uh, the word A.
Okay. Excellent. Um, Mi- Ms. Callaway, uh, do you want to just go over the letter ru- one, one time real quick with the suggested edits and?
Okay. In the edits, we're going to add the word maintain A lower on the bullets. And, um, we're going to remove and local economy from the letter. Um, I, my goal was to really focus, um, on the bullet areas on why we should and keep it to one page. Excuse me, and get signed off by, um, the other, uh, by the city and dignity help.
Very, very good. Um, if there's no other comments, I'll take a motion.
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Um, what, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Um, so roll call vote. Mr. Toffenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Garamendi?
Because we don't fully understand the consequences of what we're doing, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi. Ms. Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Fuldorff?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Stoppa is a yes. So that's, uh, four and y- aye, uh, zero, zero no's, one abstention. And I understand why, Mr. Garamendi, uh. Okay. So with that.
Um, Stacy, I'll work with you on that layout.
Yes.
And, um, we'll confirm with the City of Angels what they choose to do. We'll, we'll discuss this offline.
Okay.
And then get signatures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Um, so let's, uh, at, my, my apologies, back to my agenda here. Um, so at this time, we'll move on to, uh, public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda. Uh, so it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty minute allotted per, time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide any opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. With that, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, we have Terry McBride.
Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator for New California State, which is happening, gentlemen and ladies. Um, grievance thirty-nine, Declaration of Grievance Statement of Facts. California violates the following United States Constitution on Article Four, Section Four. United States Constitution, Article Six, First Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment. The Order of the Day, Save the Republic. In grievance thirty-seven, Chapter Two, The Dictator Uses Martial Law on American Citizens. The State is in martial law, stating the following. The California Governor has obtained power by the force of fear. Utilizing a compliant media pseudoscience corrupt mono-party system, local officials, and statewide government agency, the Governor has become a classic dictator who is destroying the state and its people through martial law. Using the incremental stages of implementation of martial law, the Governor started with the use of emergency powers as he declared for himself one-man rule. Next came the masking, then the closure of schools, churches, businesses, travel restrictions, curfews, releasing of convicted felons, and lockdowns of entire counties in the largest state in the nation. In grievance thirty-eight, Chapter Two, Investigate Domestic Terrorism, we stated the following. Since March fourth, twenty twenty, the California Governor has been an official dictator. The definition of a dictator by Oxford Dictionary is a ruler with total power over a country, typically one who has obtained control by force. The legislature in California State is non-existent but cannot resist their totalitarian impulses as they have eagerly allowed the Governor, who has asserted their power under the guise of the COVID virus. Of course, with a mono-party system that fails to provide republican form of government, the unilateral giving up of legislative power to the dictator has been an easy totalitarian impulse to follow. As a result, an influx of fear about the possibility of the invocation of martial law or unchecked military intervention is circulating around the internet amongst scholars and citizens alike. The fear is certainly understandable because martial law is described or confined or limited, described in any way by the Constitution or laws. Bill Banks, a Syracuse professor, stated, if someone has declared martial law, they're essentially saying that they are the law. Martial law can be imposed when civil rule fails, temporarily being replaced by a military authority in a time of crisis. Though rare, there have been a number of notable U.S. cases where martial law came into play, including the times of war, natural disaster, and civic, uh, dispute. And I'm going to be out of time to hear the rest. You're always very welcome to, uh, go to newcaliforniastate.com or ncsfiveone.com and read these grievances because frankly, they have an effect on you guys. Thank you much.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Any further public comment?
There are no other public comments.
Thank you, Stacy. Um, so I'll close the public comment at this time. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. So at this time, I would like to see if any board members would like to pull the, uh, single item number four? None? Any staff? Public? Okay, so, uh, with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Supervisor Callaway. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Supervisor Fuldorff. Um, Supervisor District One?
Aye.
Supervisor District Two?
District Two, aye.
Supervisor District Three?
Yes.
Supervisor District Four?
Yes.
And I'm an aye also. That passes five oh. Um, at this time, uh, if you don't mind, uh, can we take a ten-minute break? Before getting to the regular agenda.
You're the chair.
Hey, I, (laugh) thank you, board, for supporting me on that. Thank you.
Do you want to take a poll?
Not yet. I'm going to wait till later. Okay, we're going to take a ten-minute break. I, I guess if they aren't here, they aren't going to say so, so let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. We are live.
Thank, thank you, Stacy.
You're very welcome.
Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Uh, agenda item number five, Administrative Office, Provide Direction to Staff Regarding Twenty Twenty-One Study Sessions and Board Priorities. This is a big one. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, hand it over to Mr. Alt to, uh, facilitate the conversation, and then we'll hear from the board members.
Good morning, Chairman Stoppa, uh, Madam Vice Chair Fuldorff, and honorable members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to have me introduce this item. I'd like to welcome the public that might be interested as well, and as you see by our Zoom screen, we have a good many of our colleagues joining as well. Um, I know this is the board's opportunity to talk about the priorities, so, uh, I won't take a lot of time in the presentation, but I did do a few slides just to organize our discussion points. And then that'll, uh, certainly I'll give opportunity then for the board discussion for priorities. Um, I wanted to cover real quick a couple of things that we'll talk about today, uh, because we do have many new members of our public, uh, fortunately, joining our, our county. We are, we're seeing our demographic, uh, change and grow. Uh, we also have new internal members and obviously some new members of the board as well. I'll talk real quickly about the purpose of the study sessions. Um, some categories, uh, as, as how I've, um, classified projects for consideration. Recommendations from, uh, me and the department heads to the board for consideration. And then we'll open it up to board discussion from there. Real quickly, the study sessions are, uh, uh, something that the board agreed to do in twenty nineteen. The board directed the third Tuesday of each month to be designated as a study session. Um, these are important, um, uh, agendas for us. They, uh, don't have many regular agenda items, as you can see by today's item, uh, or agenda rather, and they're really set aside for in-depth study of complex issues. Um, evidence of that are things that we completed in the twenty nineteen study sessions throughout the year, uh, such as the general plan update and the cannabis regulations that we now are working under. Unfortunately, uh, we started the practice in twenty twenty at the beginning of the year, but for, uh, most of the year, we were unable to have the study sessions due to our work priority being consumed by COVID nineteen um, and our, our response, both externally and internally. Uh, late in the year, in November of twenty twenty, uh, the Board of Supervisors began again having the study sessions and, uh, consideration for what we would prioritize, moving on in the, into the twenty twenty-one year. And hopefully today, we'll be able to get guidance on the plan of work for the, the coming calendar year. Um, moving forward real quickly, I wanted to talk about, um, some projects or recommendations that will come from the department heads. And what I ask after the November study session was that the department heads consider, uh, the board's values. Uh, as you recall, in, in one of our meetings at towards the end of twenty twenty, the board reemphasized the values that, uh, had been adopted earlier on by the board. And what I ask the department heads to do is not necessarily consider specific projects for their individual departments, but to look at projects that cut across multiple departments um, and ultimately integrate with the board's values, which you can see highlighted here in, in red. I won't go over them. The board's aware of them. Um, but from, uh, that ask, I was able to receive several recommendations from the department heads, and then some of which that will be my recommendations as we go forward. Um, while they're consistent with the board's values, I have, uh, essentially, uh, consolidated them into different categories. And, and my apologies here, I s- uh, stated criteria, but these are categories of projects that, as we move forward, I'll outline, uh, various recommendations that exist in legal mandates, fire life safety, um, efficiency and improved service to the public. Uh, consideration for projects that might be revenue enhancements or reductions in expenditures. Certainly, priorities from previous years are important as well, so I tried to bring some of those forward. Um, we'll also take a quick look at ongoing priorities that exist in the current year that will also carry over potentially, or m- most likely by direction of the board in the twenty twenty-one year. And then some new or emerging needs. I'll say they're emerging, but we have discussed them in previous meetings, so they won't be a secret to the board when I, when I discuss them here in the context of our recommendations. I know this is a really busy slide, but the table basically just takes each of our projects, uh, um, or some recommendation for board consideration. These aren't all things that I would suggest we do at, at one time this year, or even things that are necessarily going to be accomplished in the coming year. But there are some that are, uh, really jump up on the importance level here. The legal mandate, redistricting, um, we, we absolutely have to fulfill that requirement, and it's on a, a fairly short runway through the first half of the year. So while it's a legal mandate, it's not necessarily a priority of the board, but it will certainly influence our ability to be able to, uh, progress on any of the board's priorities as, as we move through the beginning part of, and first half of the year here. Um, under fire life safety, uh, this will be a new item for the board to, to hear about, and certainly for us to discuss in public, but the, uh, jail mechanical systems. While our new jail is, um, relatively new, and we've had a lot of discussion about the old jail demolition, what we're seeing now that our quote-unquote new jail is now becoming a little bit more aged, that there are concerns in the mechanical systems that are going to drive significant costs to the board that will require resource allocation. And, and they're listed here under fire life safety because of the health implications for, um, those who have opportunity to stay in our, in our jail, hopefully for short term, but, um, also our employees that work in those spaces as well. Under, um, improve efficiency and service, uh, one of the things that I'd like the board to consider, and this came through department heads as well, is that we have a full impl- implementation of Tracket and that we utilize that for all of our permit processes and business licenses, and that we ultimately are able to utilize Tracket, e- Tracket in the way that it was intended uh, for our public to be able to access permits and licenses and things of that nature without having to come on campus. As we know with the, the, uh, COVID pandemic, um, the less face-to-face interaction and hand-to-hand exchanges that we have, uh, the more safe that our public and our employees will be. Uh, but that, without full implementation of Tracket, limits our ability to be able to issue, issue all of our permits and licenses. Another thing that I will classify under improve efficiency and service is that of classification and comp study. Um, the board's heard a lot about this discussion over time. Um, but my philosophy, and I think you've heard it, we've discussed it in, you know, previous meetings, is that our staff is our conduit to serving the public. And ultimately, having staff that are, that are trained and experienced in their jobs and that we maintain in their positions, um, through appropriate classification and competitive salaries, ultimately helps us keep a, a, um, experienced employee. And, and hopefully helps us build upward mo- mobility for our staff as well so that they can transition throughout the departments in, in the county and become stronger across all the services that we offer. Um, that is one that came through, uh, the department heads, but it's one that the board's discussed as well and that I see is, is important there, so all of us agree on that one being important. One that came through the department heads, um, public lobby in Building D. That's one of our most heavily used, um, buildings, and this wouldn't necessarily only go for Building D. Uh, but that's where our treasure tax collector, clerk recorders, and, and other offices are. I don't mean to minimize anybody by not mentioning who's in that building, but, um, there's increased foot traffic in that particular building because of the services that are offered there. And one of the considerations may be, uh, modifications to the building and the, um, limitation of public access to the full of the building um, so that we can, again, consider making sure our employees and our public continue to be safe without having, um, close interactions. Obviously, COVID nineteen is a pandemic we're living through now, and a, a change to a building needs to be considered for over the long haul. Um, so I, I don't want to suggest it's only appropriate because of the, the COVID pandemic. Uh, there are ways that we can streamline our work through coordinating, uh, uh, where the, the public congregates and how they are served. Moving on, uh, re- revenue enhancements and, um, expense reductions. Uh, this isn't a comprehensive list, but one of the things that the board has, uh, commented on, we've heard from our assessor. We've also reviewed, uh, in various years, the grand jury, uh, reports and recommendations that, um, the assessment role is an important thing for us to be aware of. We, we all are aware, aware that our assessment role ultimately impacts the whole of the county's budget. Um, it's the, the significant balance of our general fund revenues. And so this is one that, that we could consider looking at in the current year and would have beneficial out-year, um, impacts as well. Um, before I move on to the next one, I want to mention that I'm not recommending any one of these or prioritizing these as it stands right now. I'm simply reading off a list. Um, it's obviously the board's discretion to consider how we might prioritize these. It's obviously the board's discretion to consider how we might prioritize these and whether or not we would take them on and in what year. But there has been in this current year discussion of department or office consolidations. We do have open positions. We have had discussions, for example, about Sheriff Coroner as an example, and whether or not we can experience either savings or efficiencies by considering office consolidation. So that's one that's come up not only in board discussions, but through the department heads as well. Obviously, one that has been discussed for many years and well documented in the grand jury reports and discussed from our ad hoc and the board of supervisors is the idea of fulfilling our wishes on a, and I shouldn't necessarily say wishes, but our need to have an updated animal shelter. That's not new news. I won't stay in that particular spot very long. Moving on to ongoing and continuing priorities, the general plan update, as you'll see for the next agenda, Peter Mauer has brought forward a discussion of the update and a report out on the update, but this is obviously one that may require discussion throughout the year and continue focus of resources within the county to make sure we fulfill the update and fully implement the general plan update that the board took action on last year. Strategic planning is one that I and the board have talked about quite frequently and at your direction. This is back on after the November 2020 study session where we reviewed a point-in-time snapshot of where we were at and strategic planning. This is one that after I go through this list and open it for discussion, that I have some more discussion, some more slides if the board's interested in reviewing those as we go forward. Won't be a strategic planning discussion, but more recommendations on how we might be able to move forward, not only in the board's prioritization of projects in this current year, but also do some out-year strategic planning as well. New and emerging issues, they aren't that new. We've discussed them in previous board meetings, but whether or not we look at a strategic financial plan or a long-range facilities master plan in one cohesive view, either or both are important in that. We know that we have facilities needs included in them or the animal shelter, but the district attorney's office and others have popped up regularly in our discussion. And it seems to me to be at a point where if we don't parse out one particular facilities project, if we're going to consider them in the whole, we not only need to look at what our intention is long-term for where our facilities will be, whether they'll be on campus or will continue to disperse out throughout the county. And then, of course, as we look at our variety of facilities needs, how might we finance each of them? And I won't go into great detail, but that financial plan coupled with a facilities master plan will be something that takes a great deal of effort and thought on behalf of the board. So I would suggest that those are maybe two that might be more than just one project that would be in the 2021 year and might extend out past our current year discussions. So I know this is a board discussion. I wanted to outline those projects. I'll stay on those projects for a moment to see if there's any board discussion or questions on those. As I mentioned, I did put in a few slides about strategic planning, but I want to at least give the board opportunity to discuss or ask questions about the projects or recommendations that I put forward here on the table on the slide that we're viewing as we speak.
Do we have any hands? I see Ms. Callaway using her hand.
Dr. Alt, on the one for where you have track it implementation permits, one of my items that been for study session was just on IT alone, which would be inclusive of that. It's, they are so integral to all parts of the county. I mean, there isn't a department that isn't impacted by it. And I guess I would very much like to see something that isn't just maybe track it, but a session from IT about the kinds of things they're doing. I don't think we realize, I don't realize, I speak for myself, how important what they're doing to all of our operations and that they might see things differently than we do. So to me, that's would be very much a study session I'd like to see. Redistricting, I feel we need to deal with that sooner than later. And of course, to me, animal shelter has to go to the top of the list, but I've been saying that for 25 years. And on the financial end of it, I have proposed in the past, and maybe this is a good time, is that we do some long-term planning on the financial end and that we have the detailed budget that we do every year, but we have an estimated budget of two or four years out. Because we talk, we and probably every other city and county, including the state, talk about stability and funding. There is no such thing as stability of funding when we talk about public funding. But I would like us to look at what that would be without, I'd like to see what that would look like to do a two- or four-year budget and how that would work. And I'm definitely supportive of the one for classification and comp study because we know that we're sort of, we're not necessarily paying market rates for certain positions, and we need to look at that overall. I mean, I really like what you've proposed. That's my take. Was there anything else I had? No, you covered everything that was on my list. Gosh dang, not too bad, Dr. Alt.
Did you two talk beforehand?
No, we didn't.
Okay. For the last year, we've had numerous discussions, chair stopper.
I see your hand up, Mr. Gueramendi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I have to add is maybe under revenue enhancements, expense reductions, that we talk about a cannabis program and how that's going and any tweaks we may need to do in 2021. I would think that when we talk about assessments and revenue like cannabis, we should probably move that up earlier in the year than later in the year, because if there's any changes, for example, in cannabis, we need to do it now for it to be valid for this year. So that would be the only thing, the question would be what priority? Obviously, redistricting's coming soon, and I don't know if that all entails. So let's figure that out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. I'm gonna, I don't see any other hands up, so I'm gonna go ahead and go in order of numbers. Mr. Toffinelli, do you have anything to add to the conversation at this time?
None at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffinelli. Ms. Fulendorf.
Yes, the only comment I have is I like the idea that Merida said about the two- to four-year budget planning, because I think that would help, especially with long-range facility, to see, I feel like those two can overlap. So if there's a way to possibly simultaneously look into that more detail on how to apply the strategic financial plan to some of the other items on this list. And that's all I have.
Very good, Ms. Fulendorf. I'm in agreement. Some things we're talking about here do overlap. I think Ms. Callaway and Ms. Fulendorf and Mr. Gueramendi, when he brings up the revenue discussion, you know, there's multi-facets, including the assessor's office, that I think we need to put in one study session, because they are multi-crossing along the lines that, you know, these all go into our strategic plan also. So yeah, the strategic financial plan is definitely something to go onboard with what Ms. Callaway brought up with a four-year long-term planning on a budget, you know, for example, you know. There's a few other things I have, I have my list here. I'm gonna go down on, you have most of this stuff covered already within this is, you know, part of the streamlining, the permitting process also goes in line with what you already brought up. Something that's not on here is integrated waste and Rock Creek, an issue I've been bringing up for a few years, and we've gotten agreement by other supervisors that this is an important issue. I think this is one that we need it to possibly sit down. I don't know if it coincides with our capital improvements or what else, but I think we're definitely going to have some capital improvement study session at one point that that could be incorporated into, and then we can talk about what our options are as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. I had written it down, the division of cannabis control, and that is absolutely financial. We need to, you know, stay on the forefront of how we're going to proceed with that and actually get an update on what the results are and how people are moving forward. We've told the public when we started that we're going to update them so often. I think we're a little bit behind schedule on that update. So in the, you know, Mr. Gueramendi is correct on bringing that up sooner than later, because that's something we as a board said we would do. Redistricting, that's state mandate, or, you know, that's something we're going to have to do. Definitely, we need to talk about that. The assessment role, getting it updated, get an update on that. That is revenue enhancement expenses. That's definitely something we need to sit down and talk about, talk with the assessor, see what we need to do to be able to facilitate us getting as current as possible. I mean, there's going to be a certain time period that we can never catch up to because home sale tomorrow. But that's on my list. These, I mean, we've all talked about the animal shelter. I agree with Ms. Callaway. We've talked about it for a lot of years. We need, you know, this all, and this all comes down to, I really like what you have so far, Mr. Alt. I'm starting to talk too much now. I'm going to stop myself. It's just, it's going to come down to us, moving forward, something high on my priority list is the strategic plan, and so that we can start facilitating the board's priorities and how we're going to move forward as a county to make, to actually achieve these goals. And that way, we can, not only as a board, but as staff and departments across the county, start having some accountability on what we're actually doing as we move forward. I think that's a great part for us to work towards as a county, because every year we give our priorities, but we need to start giving more clear direction on how to achieve those priorities in the best way for the county. So I'll leave it at that for now. Mr. Alt, do you want to move on to the next section, or how do you want to proceed from here?
Actually, that, Mr. Chair, was a nice segue into the next section. Our Madam Chair, Merida, also provided a nice segue in that, not only in my list, but in our discussion, we have woven together a couple of things. Some of these projects are what I would call objectives. They're annual plan of work that we should be responsible for carrying out, and some of them are multi-year and multifaceted, frankly. So that segues into the discussion about strategic planning. And so what I want to touch on really quickly, and then I'll highlight what I just said there about how you provided the segue. And I know in many cases, and in sometimes our public's cases, we think of strategic planning as just some lofty aspirational book that goes on a shelf and we never access. And at the end of the day, there's very distinct purposes of strategic planning. It doesn't have to be measured by a weight with a lot of graphics and pictures and photographs. It really needs to be a functional plan that aligns the board's priorities and what the board wants with our annual budget and then obviously our long-term fiscal goals as well. Ultimately, the strategic plan, if we move forward and it will create accountability, where we will have a multi-year list of projects and our annual plans that we complete each year, where we're able to go back and evidence for the public what we got done. And if we didn't complete a project, what were the reasons? Was there a pandemic? Were there budget challenges? Were there performance issues that caused us not to be able to complete the projects? And so I'll just use as an example, as Supervisor Callaway in her last meeting did for us, she did a pretty significant inventory on accomplishments during the time that she was a chair. The old jail demolition as one example, but those are discreet measurable things that we can evidence to the public and show that we're doing the work of the public, and it creates accountability when we have them documented in a plan. The strategic plan also then will connect and align the board's goals and ultimately the board's strategic directions, or I should say, the board's values with the strategic directions, and then the board priorities, which we're talking about today, which should be annual plans. And then ultimately, the next step should be that we connect the CAO's goals and the CAO's evaluation with the board's priorities, and then department goals and objectives and evaluations of the departments with the strategic plan. So at the end of the day, it ties it all together. It doesn't have to be a pretty plan. It doesn't have to be a fancy plan. It needs to be a very functional plan so that we can evidence the work that the board wants to get done, and we can show through our work annually, through an annual report or something to that effect, that we got the work of the public done. And so they can be pretty, pretty simple. I won't stay long on these. We've talked about these things before, so I won't be too illustrative of what the process looks like, but just for those who haven't seen it yet, this is a really quick illustration of what the process should entail. Mission, vision, values, strategic goals, operational goals, and I'm going to talk about those in a minute as I move on. We already looked at the mission, vision, values. These are that which the board has already talked about in a study session last year and reaffirmed as the mission, vision, and values of our current organization. And so we know then that in the process of setting the board's priorities, we've completed the mission, vision, values. And as we talk through much of the discussion that we have had here in the last few minutes, many of the projects are just annual goals, and these are the operational goals that, frankly, we should be bringing forward to you. I should be bringing them forward to you as a CAO. All of our department heads should be bringing forward an annual plan of work that shows that we've got recommendations in our own departments to make sure that we're consistent with the mission, vision, values of the organization, and then ultimately the board's strategic goals. And so while we're doing this work here in Level Three, what I want to come to is the strategic goals, and this is the place where we're kind of weaving in together in the discussion. We're talking about an annual operational plan, and we're talking about things that are long-term, that are two- to four-year period that we may want to look at. These are things that, just from the conversation, I'll grab systems integration Supervisor Callaway talked about, very important, that we look at all of our systems being integrated across the organization. Financial stability and all of our policies and multi-year budgeting potentially, facilities and having the types of facilities that support us serving the public, employee engagement as an example, and all the things that create motivated and engaged workforce. These are the kinds of things that would live in the strategic goals areas, and they're multi-year, where each year we would be bringing plans, much like we're discussing right now, operational plans forward to ensure that we're meeting the board's strategic goals. The reason why I bring that up is because we've opened The reason why I bring that up is because we've woven them together and, and previous conversation I've said that we haven't fully completed our plan, but it's not that we're not doing the work, it's that the way we've gone about it has intermixed them and that's not uncommon, many organizations do them, do, do that, um, but as we move forward in a year, what I'd like to be able to do is hopefully through our discussions is unpack what a strategic direction of the board is, um, and those things that would last two to four or five years as the directions of the board and then our annual projects support that strategic direction. For example, um, Supervisor Callaway men- mentioned systems integration. Well, that may be multi-year plan to, to assess what our systems are, whether there's interconnectivity, what systems we have, whether any are obsolete and we're still using them, um, whether they create workflow stoppages be- because we have multiple systems across different departments, um, and from that assessment, then in the out-years, we may have to budget, uh, resources to, um, either programming resources, uh, new system purchases, et cetera, where it may take two or three or four years, once we have the assessment done, to be able to fully integrate all of our systems. Um, so we would be bringing back through IT and through our departments, recommendations for annual plans of work that would support systems integration. And I use that only illustratively because one of our supervisors adeptly pointed that out as a need. And just to give an example, I, I, I wanna be careful that I don't always grab the same example every time, but, uh, this is obviously a, a graphic organizer not suggesting that this is the way we should do it, but you can see that in Mono County, and I, I intentionally picked a small county, but they have the mission, vision, values here on the, the, uh, as I look at it, the left side of the graphic, um, and then these are all the projects in their, um, in their different departments that they're doing to support their mission, vision and values. And so, um, their mission, vision, values then is supported by these strategic priorities that you see across the top. I'm, I'm making this up for us just from our discussion, but, uh, it could for us look like, uh, systems integration, uh, strategic financial planning, which would include some of our facilities projects, employee engagement and all the things that we do to create a, a healthy, motivated, engaged employee, um, improve county operations, you know, that, that could go with a variety of things that I just discussed, but whatever the board's prerogative is, and these particular strategic pri- priorities, these are the, you know, one, two and three, four, five across the top you see here are the strategic, um, things that will last over two, three, four, five years, and then in their particular plan, this happens to be illustrative of 2018, these are the things that they were gonna do under each, um, area, and whether or not they did it, I don't know, but if it were me recommending this particular type of plan, at the end of 2018, we should come back and give an annual report that says what we did in each of these areas to prove accountability for what the board's strategic priorities or strategic directions are. Um, I won't, I won't stay long on another plan, but Mariposa, our friends to the south have, uh, they call them focus areas, these are the same as strategic, um, priorities, um, and then under each of them, they have a list of projects and who the lead agency is and then ultimately how long they expect to implementation. So, in a, in a graphic such as what we're seeing with Mariposa County, I, I bet if I dug further into their plan, as each, uh, year culminates, that they're checking off what got completed in these plans so that they can evidence to their public that they did particular projects over a two, four or five-year lifespan to, to enhance prosperity in their particular county. These are just examples, as you can see by looking at just these two examples, there's no right or wrong way to have the graphic organizer to organize our plan, it can be as simple as a table, um, that just shows what our strategic directions are, and doesn't upend where we are now with our goals and, and annual work plan, it just means that we can set the plate of work and what the priorities are for this current year and still continue the, the discussion for the board to have on what their two, three, four, five, how, how many ever the board chooses, what their areas of focus or what the strategic directions would be, that would be essentially laying out, out our multi-year plan. Um, so, we would be doing two things in concert, one would be working on our annual plan, which is a one-year plan, and developing the strategic directions, or whatever we choose to call them, which would then become our multi-year plan for, for completing our plate of work. And I know that's a lot of material, I didn't intend to get deep into strategic planning, I've taken many notes on, um, what the supervisors wish to have in terms of, uh, priorities for the year, um, you can see the plate of work is quite robust, um, I might suggest that all of the things that I listed as recommended, uh, projects are not things that I believe that we could accommodate all in one particular year unless, um, we look at either bringing in outside resources for, uh, consulting review, or in the alternative, we look at some sort of kind of committee type approach, or at least a phased-in approach over time. Um, we, we don't have the good fortune of having, uh, robust staffing as you've heard, uh, many times, uh, because of our, not only our retention, but just being a resource-challenged county, uh, but now also with, with COVID, we have a significant percentage of our employee is, is out due to the emergency as well. Um, and so, while we can complete the plate of work and while we've talked about, uh, pretty robust suggestions on what we might accomplish, I would suggest that next steps first be that we look at what we could accomplish in a year and what we've discussed to this point and that I'd be obliged to bring back for the board, um, whether it's a roadmap or a table or whatnot, but a proposed timeline for how we would bring each of these items forward. And then the last thing I wanna touch on is, um, before I go to the questions or, or comments from the board is that, um, some of these I might suggest, for example, like IWM and the cannabis program are under the CAO and under my department anyway, so I might suggest that those are things that we could move into goals for the CAO under my departments and that I can ensure that those come forward. Um, for example, the cannabis program, we intend to do a quarterly report to the board and report out, um, uh, Greg has done a nice job in starting to frame out what performance metrics would look like for that program so that the, the board and our public sees the performance metrics for that program every quarter. Um, and so you're asking less about what the program is doing and be able, being able to consider more thoughtfully from a policy level, is there additions, enhancements or further restrictions we need to build into the program based on what the performance metrics are telling us? Um, and that's something that I endeavor to bring forward, uh, not only for the cannabis program, but to set the template for performance metrics and continue to bring program updates regularly. I mean, that's something that we can do with IWM and the cell reopening as well, um, although that, that's gonna be a pretty big endeavor in and of itself, but, um, so it gives the board opportunity to look at what would be, uh, multi-year priorities, what would be this year's priorities for the board and those things that you see also being coupled with the CAO's goals and ultimately perfo- uh, evaluation of my performance on whether or not I complete those goals on behalf of the board. And so I know that's a lot of discussion, a lot to digest in, in one presentation, but I can go back to any of the slides. My apologies for the big flashing question mark, I didn't know that it was, uh, animated, um, so I'm gonna move back to our project lists, hopefully just so that we don't have something, um, steering mile away from the, the board and the board discussion.
Thank you for that, Al, we appreciate it. Uh, any board discussion?
No hands? Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I do have a question. Um, and I, I'm not sure where we're at or where it has gone and if it's been, um, fixed, but for, for a long time, and I haven't heard about it lately very often, but HR and the auditor, their systems aren't the same when we go to paychecks and, and payroll and trying to get the hours from the employees in the same format for the auditor. Um, is that still an issue or, or are they, are now operating on the same, uh, system?
Supervisor Toffenelli, that's a good question, I can't answer it, um, off the top of my head, I, while I'm sharing screen, I can't see if Judy and/or Kathy are on, um...
So, I am here, um, Al. So, we did look, uh, several years ago, we did look, uh, at a timekeeping system so that departments could, uh, capture time by employees, uh, automating that process and it flows straight into the auditor's, um, uh, system, financial system. It was put on hold due to other, uh, uh, priorities of the, um, departments, and so that is something that we keep, um, reminding, you know, Kathy and I have talked about recently, and it is something that we need to do, but it's not something, um, that we do have in front of us right now. And then also the, um, company that we looked at was no longer, uh, associated with, um, One Solution or Central Square, because of the, the buyouts of our financial system, we would have to go out and look at other timekeeping systems. So, it is a priority, but it's not something that we are working on at this moment.
Well, my, my question would be, i- if we get this resolved, should we put it on the list in, say, 24 months, 12 months, whatever, put it on a list? It, it would certainly be a cost-saving issue for us because right now we have two different departments doing two different things and trying to put it together. I, I'm sure somewhere with, or Kathy down the line who ultimately has to deal with issuing paychecks, um, it would be cost-saving in her department and time-saving. So, I, I would be interested in, in possibly putting that on this list as far as system integration, cause it's been going on for years and years and years.
Good point, Supervisor Toffenelli, I would agree as well, I think frankly, probably wanna, wh- what we may wanna do, and I, I don't know how this came about previously, but, you know, I, obviously we can buy systems to do just about anything, but the systems we buy should connect to our, our financial system and speak to it, so it automates as much, which is your point, it automates as much as possible, so we're not, um, doing work and rework, uh, en- entering data into one system and then printing it out and then re-entering it into another. And so what I might suggest is that the, the way to get there is for us to look at an inventory of our systems, and I, and I know I don't require, I don't remember the requirement and what causes us to do it, but we do have an inventory of what our systems are and have a report out from what our system connectivity looks like and system capabilities from IT on what things might be in their mind, you know, the things that we start with. I don't know the history behind, uh, payroll and HR, but, um, obviously if we're, we're changing companies, that could be a problem, but there might be some systems challenges, um, that we would otherwise have to address prior to actually just, uh, integrating the systems then.
Yeah, I, I'm interested going into a history of it, but I'm interested in getting it resolved and getting it fixed and, and putting it on a list that we're aware of and is upfront, and then we can maybe have a study session on the costs and the time period and, and vendors or whatever to get it resolved, but it is a longstanding issue, um, that's been going on for quite some time.
Thank you, sir, I've written, I've written it down, I make sure I've got it in my notes.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli, thank you, Mr. Holt, um, Ms. Bullendorf?
Um, I have a couple questions, um, and if you don't have the answer, that's fine, I just curiosity in coming into this, um, for the first time with you guys. Um, my first question is, with the priorities in front of us right now and talking about what would be the focus for the next year, with multiple department head vacancies, are there things that the boards should discuss in the near future that would integrate with, um, with filling those positions that we should take advantage of now or discuss or what have you? Um, and with that, go bouncing off of what Gary just said, would it be good to put in this matrix as well of who the responsible party is to create accountability across those department heads as well as the board so we know where, where things are? Um, and how, how that works? Um... And then the third question was, you mentioned contracting and cons- and were consultant, I believe, um, could you explain that or could we talk about that explanation in the near future of what that would, what you're thinking of and how did that relate to workload for you or other department head that we might need to know that we're not aware of? And that's all.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I address those?
I abs- I don't mind a bit, Al, go ahead.
So, I, I, I think the question for open positions is, what was for the, the board and possibly considering whether or not there's any consolidation or anything different we might can do, might configure, how we might configure the county while we have open positions, so I'll obviously, uh, not address that one, that's the board's prerogative. But in terms of the responsible party, um, that, that's a very good point, and most of the other plans you'll, a- a- as you've seen even in, I think in the city plan, had identified where the different department heads would be responsible. Um, for the majority of our projects we see on this list, they're pri- they're primarily admin, I, I realize general plan update is not, uh, but many of the things on here are admin responsibilities, and, and I think that's really related to, um, that us missing that middle piece where the board sets the strategic directions and those four or five high-level areas where, um, the board views the county going and then us asking each of the department heads specific to their department to identify projects that would, um, be their annual plan of work. Um, while I did that and, and while I did ask the department heads to provide feedback, um, I, I was quite specific in looking at things that connected to the board's values and were multi-department, um, uh, projects or enhancements, and so right now I think if I were just to line up who the responsible party would be, much of it is facilities, IT, HR, uh, their admin-type responsibilities, so I think as we get into strategic directions, we can be a little bit more robust on what we ask from the department heads because they have great ideas on things they could do in their own department that would meet, um, the board's strategic goals. There, there are a few, for example, and I can transition a little bit into, um, your question about contracting or consulting, redistricting is a, is an example, it's not really a priority as much as we have to do it, and it's one of those things where the board could consider as an example, if we wanted to do redistricting in alignment with, um, front-loading some other priorities on this list, it may be worth looking at a consultant, and I'm not pitching that for redistricting, we know we've had our challenges with consultants in this county, um, and, and we're quite shy about using them because some of the experience that we've had, so I'm not suggesting that we do that and that we go out and grab a consultant for redistricting, but for example, on that project, it's obviously gonna take time on task from clerk recorder's office, from, uh, council and from my office, and so because it's a legal mandate that we have to do here in the short run, it will take time off task of those departments that are relatively small, um, so, so that we can focus on what the effort is for redistricting. And, and I can tell you, we've already started to meet on this, fortunately, Sarah coordinated a meeting between the departments that would have involvement and what our suggestion would be is that either for next meeting or the following, uh, regular meeting, not for a study session, but that we bring an information item back that shows what the timeline looks like. Um, we don't have it available for this meeting, but that's one of the places where the board could look at the capacity of staff that we have now and can we do redistricting and, for example, consider building an animal shelter in the first six months of the, of the year, or are those two things weighty enough, um, and require enough time on task for our staff that we would either need to phase them in so that some of the priorities are the second half of the year, or if we wanna lay them on top of one or half of the year, or if we want to lay them on top of one another, that we do look at some outside help? Classification and comp study is another example. That's something that I'm particularly confident that Judy and her staff can do, but it takes a lot of time on task. And I can tell you, as you've heard in reports from us, that HR is primarily devoted right now just to our internal COVID response, and that won't stop in the short run. So if classification and comp study was something the board was interested in, we probably couldn't handle that internally until either the second half of the year or maybe have to put it off in this current year and make it an out-year project. And quite frankly, that's one like the animal shelter, and as Supervisor Toffenelli suggested on our systems integration, that those kinds of things just hang out there if we don't get them on a schedule and put a, you know, a calendar marking next to them to make sure that we're paying attention to them. So I've talked a lot in answering both your questions. I'll pause there to see if I answered them effectively, or if you have specific questions you'd like to ask about those two. And by the way, was my assumption about the positions, was that question for the board or for me?
It was in general, just my own curiosity since I'm new to the group, and if there's
any answer, that's fine. I just wanted to ask.
Are there any other board comments before I speak? Okay, with that, there's some good points brought up here. You know, getting back to strategic plan a little bit, Mr. Toffenelli, you brought up system integration, and I think Ms. Fuldorff followed up on that a little bit, and we got a good answer, I believe, from where we're at right now, which isn't necessarily the answer we want. But this comes into the question of, Ms. Coway brought up IT as one of the things that she would like to hear about, and this goes into our antiquated systems. Do we have, already have some of these new systems, and are all these systems implemented? And are we providing a way for our departments to be able to do that? I think this kind of goes into our strategic plan and how we move forward. There's, and there's another thing that was brought up by Mr. Alt when it came to the cannabis department earlier. He said that Greg in the cannabis department was putting forward performance metrics with you, and how are we going to move, how they're, where we are at those points and what changes need to be made? Well, this is a clear path to providing what we're doing for accountability, and this is part of something that maybe we should look at across every department in the county, and putting forward performance metrics and also putting that spot on the calendar, as you said earlier, Mr. Alt, you know, along with the performance metrics. And also, something we don't have to do every year is evaluations of not just you, but our department heads. And this isn't necessarily, you know, for the negative end. It's like, you know, let's say if we had a department, we do once every two or three years an evaluation on that department head or with that department head, and that will include like the performance metrics. Have we met our points on the calendar? If not, why? You know, there's good reasons why not sometimes. It's not always possible to hit that mark on the calendar. But I think these are all things that need to be talked about, going into a strategic plan also, so that we can start regularly hitting these milestones of hitting the board's goals, and not just the board's goals, the county's goals in their entirety, because, you know, the board's goals aren't the only things that need to be done. As you said earlier, many of these things are things we should just be doing yearly, but they're important to everyone. So, and that's all part of the strategic plan. So I'll leave it off at that. If there's no other, are there any other board comments before I bring it to public comment?
Mr. Toffenelli, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of questions, and as I look at this chart, you know, the jail mechanical system, can you elaborate just a little bit on that, Al, on what we're speaking about? Is this something that we had some issues with, with the washers and dryers or the air-conditioned HVAC? Exactly what is it we're looking at here?
A little bit of all of the above, Supervisor Toffenelli. They, and this is me trying to read from my notes here from a meeting that Patrick, Rick, and Jim and I have, and so I'll be a little bit inartful, but the mechanical systems, and that's, you know, quite frankly, to start on, including the front-end automation and essentially the brain of all of the systems, all the electronical controls and those kinds of things that control everything from HVAC to the door security systems, and then moving down through more specific mechanical like the HVAC. As you know, we're having significant issues with some of our costly HVAC systems, and then ultimately into the laundry as well and laundry facilities. And I know they're more robust than what I'm speaking to from my notes, but at the end of the day, in just a rough order of magnitude, I don't want to raise too much, raised eyebrows, but in our discussions with Patrick, and a rough order of magnitude is close to 700,000. Just our guess at what it's going to take for an assessment of what we need to do. One of the things we might suggest is, if it's a priority, that we do a full assessment on all of the systems and then get a rough order of magnitude so that the board can look at what the most important and most immediate needs are and what the cost of those would be and how we're going to pay for those most immediate needs, and that we put a multi-year plan together for the board on how to address these systems. And that if we can move more aggressively through a multi-year plan, because we are fortunate in the economy or tax revenues or something to that effect, that we could accelerate the plan. But at the end of the day, it's one I'd like to bring back to the board, even if just in an information item, so I can give you a little bit more artful answer to your question, and that we could have those that are more in the know, including Patrick and the sheriff and under sheriff, describe in some specificity. But what I do know in these systems and why I put it on this list is that, one way or another, we're going to pay for those systems, whether it's as an emergency breakdown here in the near future or by an organized thoughtful way of changing out some of the system issues that we have up there. And my apologies, I wasn't as specific as I could be. Probably Rick's on the call as well, and Patrick maybe as well to add some color commentary.
Well, and I hear you, and I would like to see a study session as soon as we can. We still have an issue that I don't think has been resolved as far as reduction of the vent for the dryers and its cost to be able to use all of the dryers, and we've had some mechanical issues with those dryers because of this vent issue, and I don't believe it's been resolved. So I think it needs to be front, like you said, whole presentation. It just sits there, and it's not front and forward, and it's not on a list, so it's just there, and we don't actually go forward with it. But we started to do some things on this, and so, yes, I'm very much in favor of putting this thing somewhere close that we can get early on in the year, so we can get going on it and hopefully get some resolve to this issue. We had some engineer renovations on how to fix that issue as far as the dryers, and we need to go forward with what we're going to do on it. So the jail is, should be up there, since it is relatively new building, for discussions on how to move forward on it. So that's my opinion, and thank you.
Supervisor Toffenelli, it's an astute assessment, and we can easily bring it back. It doesn't necessarily have to be a study session. Obviously, we do set the study sessions aside to look at things in more in-depth, but if it pleases the board, we could do something in shorter order that's a 20 or 30-minute discussion item or information item before the next study session as well. It is of that priority. We know we're going to have to spend money for it. We would have brought it back for mid-year consideration for some of the more immediate needs anyways, but we can take a more systems approach to it and look at it from top down and all of the expenses and be organized in how we do it, or if we just continue as we are without dedicated resources, we're going to run into an emergency repair that is going to be quite unpredictable in terms of the cost.
Yeah, I agree. So either way you want to do it, a study session or bring it back to the board, but we need to at least have this discussion and agendaize it whether it's a study session or what, so we can have this open discussion on it and have the players here, have the numbers, everything that needs to be done, so we can go through it one by one and at least assess it and know where we're at and maybe come up with a plan to go forward on it.
I would concur also, Mr. Toffenelli, that along with our other capital assets and everything else, but it would be nice if you could bring that forward as an informational item sooner than later, Mr. Alt.
Yes, sir.
Any other board members? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring it to public comment, and then I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Clerk?
Chair Stopper, I do not see any.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the board. Al, at this time, I know you've been taking notes. We've said a lot of things. You know, for the most part, I think a majority of the board's on the same page about like what our priorities are. I think you did a pretty good job of outlining it here simply and straightforward. So do you want to make any comments real quick to what's been said by the board members? Just a basic outline of what we talked about just now?
What I might suggest, off the top of my head, Mr. Chair, is that I take the notes, and if the board is okay with it, then I can do something similar to what you're seeing here, except a little bit more robust on something that might be strategic directions from what I heard today, and that would be multi-year strategic aims of the board, specific projects for the current year, and looking at some phase-in of those projects, and then also some things that might fit under CAO's goals, and not necessarily projects or so. There are things that I can do in concert with board's priorities, and then a list of things that we'll bring back and anticipated timelines for those that don't need to be or need to be sooner than the study session. Those two things were redistricting and the jail mechanical systems. So I can essentially put together kind of a schedule for, lack of a better term, and we can look at it one more time and shuffle things around that table, but we'll be continuing on the work of it while I'm preparing that. And I certainly can review it with the chair and vice chair in preparation of our next meetings.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how the rest of the board felt, but if, when you bring this back, Al, I thought it was very helpful on the one chart that you had. I think it was Mono County. It wasn't this Wheel of Fortune thing, but it was the one where you had the categories across the top, and then you brought down the projects.
Yeah.
It seemed to be very organized, and you could read it, you could see it, and it listed them. Not that one. It was that one right there.
Okay.
And so you could see, under each one of those projects, you could see what's going on, and so that's my opinion. Whether the rest of the board would like to see it that way is totally, I guess, as Marie says, you could poll or whatever.
Let's hear what Mr. Guerminde asked.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Stopper. I guess my only question is, I'm great from getting a plan and now putting together a more detailed sort of agenda on how we're going to roll this out, but I don't really want to wait to February to figure out how to plan for March and April. I guess my question is, can we chew gum and walk at the same time and plan for something for our next study session as the priority while you put these other pieces together, Al?
Well, I think you've worked long enough with me to know Supervisor Guerminde, walking and chewing gum is tough for a man named Al Alt, but I certainly will work on that. I think if we have direction of what things might be front-loaded in the plan, we can prepare for the February study session. There are a couple of things that I would suggest can be in advance of the study session, though, that aren't robust enough for a study session all by themselves, at least in first view. So scheduling for the next meeting, maybe a quick update on what redistricting and the timelines look like for the next meeting, which is Tuesday. The first meeting in February, I think that I'd be able to coordinate both with Rick and Jim, either in the first meeting or the, I actually, would have to be the first meeting in February with both Rick and Jim on the jail issues, and then also an update on the cannabis program, just to have the update. So we can take care of some of that business leading up to the February study session, and then it would really be a question of the board on what of those next list of things would be what you really want to take time to dive into in more depth in the February study session. As an example, one may be animal shelter and strategic financial plan and long-range facilities master plan, and that would really be kind of a follow-on of our discussion of what to do with ad hoc and whether we reconstitute it or have a new charge for that ad hoc or make it a standing committee or whatnot. So obviously, it's the prerogative of the board, but those seem to be the things that would be front and center that are left here after the kind of rough schedule I just mentioned off the top of my head.
Sure. I'm fine with that. I'm thinking, I'm thinking in terms of what do we, what has to happen that's going to line up for the rest of the year that's really important? I think certainly when we talk about, by February, we're going to be talking about our mid-year budget, getting ready for that. And so really taking a look at the assessment role is going to be important if we need to make investments in that process. Gary was right, we'd better figure out how we're going to fund McKenna for problems in the jail. So things, and also cannabis, are things that, you know, are going to be revenue-related in the near term. We may want to prioritize those. I love talking about the long-range facilities plans, as you know, but, you know, we got to, we got to get to, we got to get past February before we could worry about March, so to speak. So that would just be my suggestion. I don't know. It's really for you and the chair to decide how you guys want to go about this.
Thank you, Mr. Guerminde. If there's no other board comments, I'll bring back Mr. Toffenelli's point. I really like the Mariposa model. I think we can go ahead and just do that as we're putting together the item for the review. I think, I don't think there's any problem with Mr. Alt bringing it back in that format. I agree with you. The other one made me dizzy when I was looking at the Wheel of Fortune one. It's pretty extensive, though. And Mr. Guerminde, I completely agree with you. I think one of our big things is, we will be meeting for the mid-year budget. Maybe at the same time, we can be discussing the financial end. I mean, Ms. Coway did bring up the four-year plan, but our financial plan is definitely something that needs to be discussed at the same time, and I think February is as good of a time as any with mid-year budget coming forward. And so at that point, I would agree with you, Mr. Guerminde, on chewing gum and walking at the same time. You know, I think that's one right there where we can fit it in with what we already are addressing. Any other comments by board members? Oh, Ms. Fuldorff, sorry, I didn't see her.
It's okay. With these three, going back to the layout, is it possible to do a brief description of benefits in terms of transparency to the public so they understand what, kind of the rationale behind it? I don't want to take up too much of staff time, but just a brief, like, what's the benefit, the pros to why the board has chosen those? the pros to why the board has chosen those and what the result is?
Very good point. Mr. Holt?
Yeah, I mean, the language, I would want to be careful with what I propose as the language of the board because that's certainly the board's prerogative. But the point's well taken that, you know, at the end of the day, we have constrained resources and putting in the reason why we're doing this. For example, the jail mechanical systems. If I were a member of the public paying on a bond, I might think, well, the jail's only five years old. Why would the county be, need to be spending money on this? So it's important for us to be able to put out there. The rationale is that we have systems that are taxed and over the short term, in the next three to five years, maybe even shorter, they could well fail. And so that's why we're looking at these over a priority, over some other expenditure because they're cost avoidance in the future. And so we can do that pretty easily with each one of them, the benefit or why we have recommended some of them to be front-loaded in advance of all the other, probably 100 things we could have listed otherwise. And I can easily do that.
Because this is, from my previous experience with the city, that was a big benefit. So for example, let's use the redistricting, just simplifying like the legal mandate. I mean, it doesn't have to be a lot. The ones we did were pretty short. Like it's a legal mandate, we're required by state law, blah, blah, blah. There's no question asked. Or if you do a two or four-year strategic financial plan, it's pretty clear-cut. It's to set the foundations of the budget for future decision-making. I'm not looking for intimate details. I think just quick catchphrases that really get the point across.
And so you emphasize a good point. It's kind of where I started here in my thinking where this at first was a criterion and ended up being categories of projects. You know, I was trying to think through how we balance, you know, legal mandate obviously has to come before fire life safety issues. But once we get into, and I was thinking just to go down, you know, somewhat of a list that if it's a legal mandate, we do that first. If it's fire life safety, we do that secondarily or in concert with legal mandates. But as we get down a little farther in the list, I started, it wasn't as easy to prioritize them just by ranking them by those numbers. Priority from previous years as an example was, you know, the animal shelter isn't necessarily a legal mandate right now and it's not human fire life safety. But there's a lot of arguments that would put that up top. So to your point, these are categories. And then we put the justification in next to them as to why we rank them to go first, second or third in our plans and why we're spending resources on them that could otherwise be spent on something else on that list. And so I'll work to put in a short rationale in each. Obviously, it's the prerogative of the board to change that language once we get there. But I'll plug in some placeholders in our work with the department heads that are over each of those different projects so that we can emphasize the need to the public.
All right, if there are no other board comments, I'm going to assume that we're choosing to go ahead and move forward with study sessions this year. Everyone seemed pretty active in the contributions today, so thank you. And let's go on to supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. So we'll go ahead and let any supervisors that have any announcements, please speak up now. No hands. Okay, I'm going to bring up one thing that I got permission from our esteemed county council to bring up right now is one of our Senate bills that are moving forward. I'm going to go ahead and, here, I got to pull it up on my information here. SB 74, yeah, is, SB 74 is the Key California Working Act. This measure seeks to locate $2.6 billion of the one-time surplus revenue to provide grants to small businesses and nonprofits in communities throughout the state. We are endeavoring to make this proposal a part of early action legislature to provide emergency relief now. Senators Borges and Caballero, along with 46 members of the legislature, have signed on to bring assistance to small business and nonprofits in California who need help now. So they're asking for, and I'm going to do this as myself. I was wondering if you had any comments as board members to SB 74. Council said that, you know, if I could take any input on how you felt about it right now. But it's not a board vote and I'm not sending the letter out as the board if I do send it out.
Ben, this is Jack. I have no problem with you sending out a letter on your stationary. I would, on behalf of, if it was a board issue, it'd be a different one. But by all means, go ahead. I would, if you want to bring it back to the board, we're going to have to take a look at the language.
Right.
Bill itself.
Understood. I can bring it, let's see, I'll have to check the date. I'll decide whether I bring it back to the board next time or not for a board as a whole. But if the date's too short by next meeting, I will thoroughly go back over it, Mr. Garamendi, and see if it's really worth something to support. And also if you come across anything on SB 74 that concerns you, just let me know. It's not a vote of the board, but you know, just let me know.
I'll check.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I'll check in with RCRC as well and see if they've got an opinion. I'm just not familiar with.
I appreciate that input. If there'll be nothing else, I suppose we could close the meeting. Any other supervisors have anything? Well, this is, thank you, thank you for today. You all have a wonderful day. I think we can close this meeting down.